Welcome to the April 9 meeting of the North Hampton Township Planning Commission. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for the men and women of Armed Forces and First Responders.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight's meeting has three agenda items, first being approval of the February 2024 Planning Commission meeting minutes, the second is the consideration of the preliminary final plan of subdivision land development of the Mill Race Inn SLV 23-2 on Buck Road in Holland, and the third being the consideration of a zoning ordinance amendment called the blighted waterfront redevelopment area. With regard to the meeting minutes, have the committee members reviewed the February meeting minutes and are there any questions or comments on it? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second? So approved. Thank you. Okay, Mill Race.
Good evening. May I be seated?
Well, let me just, let me just real quickly. This particular situation in Holland has been lurking out there for a long time to this township, this planning commission, the supervisors. We commend your effort at trying to develop this into a workable space for new residents and at the same time enhance the community in general. There are a number of issues that we have that we want to discuss with you tonight, but we'll get to those in a minute. Before we get started with, well, let's, should we have the presentation first and then Amanda, do you want to do any of your comments and then we'll go into our comments?
Sure, yeah, let's do a presentation first.
So, the floor is yours, yeah, and who do we have?
My name is Douglas Maloney, I'm filling in for Mike McGinnis this evening. Mike is at a hearing where he's representing, I think, three different clients on three different agenda items and so he gave this to me. As you've mentioned, this site is a challenge, it's been a challenge for many, many years. Frankly, I was telling Mr. Dumeack and Mr. Costigan, I used to fish in the creek across the street from this when it was an active restaurant, a long, long time ago. The site is a little irregularly shaped, it is bordered by the creek and by Buck Road and it's also subject to very steep slopes. I'm sure you're often much more familiar with the site than I am. So it does have very real development challenges. This application proposes, as I'm sure you know, to demolish part of the inn but preserve for sure the historic part, approximately 2,000 square feet. It also proposes to redevelop the site, and the site being two separate parcels. Redevelop the site with a total of 39 age-restricted condominiums in two different buildings, one of 12 units and one of 27 units, I think that adds up to 39, and that's the proposal in a nutshell. It proposes a single access off of Buck Road which will be right in, left in, and right out only. And that's a restricted access because I'm sure you're familiar with the intersection and the intersection itself has some challenges, a sharp curve, multiple point intersection. So we thought that that was the safest access that we could provide for this community. It will have a secondary access for emergency vehicles only, and that we're working with the township fire marshal to make sure that that complies with their requirements for vehicular access. And that's the project in a nutshell. This, I was told that this project has been under agreement from Mr. Costigan, and Mr. Costigan, by the way, is present, the developer, the owner of MJ Costigan LLC Builders LLC. He's present, this project has been under agreement since COVID. So it's been a long time that we've been working on this. We think that there are a number of comments from the township engineers and we think that we're going to have to tweak the plans a little further before we get to the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Dumeack has been working with the township engineers and will continue to do so before we get to the Board of Supervisors. So we're, we understand that there will be some additional changes, we think that they'll be relatively minor in nature, but we understand that there will be some. We also have reviewed the engineers' reports and we would, if you're inclined to recommend approval of this project, it would be subject to our compliance with all of the review comments and all of the review letters. So having said that, Mr. Dumeack has prepared a very brief PowerPoint presentation, he can walk you through the project and answer any engineering questions and as I advised, Mr. Costigan is present, so if you have any questions about sort of the nuts and bolts of the project or building schedules and that type of thing.
If I have hard copies of the PowerPoint presentation, I'll take them.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Heath Dumeack, Dumeack Engineering, my office is literally around the corner. This project has been on our books for approximately three and a half years. The first series of meetings we've had with the township literally were some of the first Zoom meetings during the summer of 2020. So it kind of tells you how long this project we've been focusing on. The site itself, this is the primary parcel, and I apologize if I'm doing this to someone's back, this is the Mill Race Inn itself, this is the creek, this is the Munn's parcel, and then this is the parcel that's owned by a gentleman named Gene who has been working with us for approximately the last three years with a development easement to allow us to improve his parcel and his uses as well as support our own proposed use. This is an existing features plan of the site, again, here's the creek, this is the Mill Race Inn itself, and as you can see, what we're trying to do is restore and utilize the original core structure of the mill, the original mill. There was at one point a dam that encompassed the creek, there was a flood in the mid 90s that washed out the creek, I apologize, washed out the dam. Unfortunately FEMA has not remapped the floodplain since that time. So the floodmaps reflect this area in here as floodplain specifically due to the old dam which is no longer there. The site itself, aside from that one incongruency, realistically is out of the flood zone, the flood zone, floodway and floodplain basically follows top of bank along the west side of the creek. Again, you can kind of see, that's the parcel owned by the neighbor, that's the Munn's parcel. There are two, for the adjoining neighbor, there are two different parking areas and two different driveways into the site. There is also a rather steep, I'll call it emergency access, that's there now. You're looking at something that's probably 30 to 40% slope, and that's been there as long, I'll be honest, as long as I can remember. The original Mill Race Inn, the restaurant, this was all considered parking back then, a little bit of ancillary parking here, and I apologize, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with what the inn was back in the day. It has been vacant basically since the mid 90s post-flood, a number of developers have tried to design improvements, and quite honestly, I'm very happy to be here this evening, we've gotten the furthest out of everyone. The proposed design, as I said, salvages the existing historic inn structure. We are utilizing the same entrance that has been servicing the property for decades if not centuries. Parking in this area will be for the proposed, this is intended to be an office, and then we have 39 condos that are run along the creek with ancillary parking as well as a one-car garage for each unit in the building. We've relocated the emergency access to, I'll call it, the northern side of the site, of the neighbor's site, and he is amenable to that location. We are adding additional parking dedicated to his office use, and we have three different storm systems proposed on the site, I believe they're all underground systems. So that's what we are proposing, the buildings themselves will be sprinkled, the Mill Race Inn, depending on the historical nature and what's the final design, may also get sprinkled as well. It's going to depend on, quite honestly, what we see when we get in there. I'm a little afraid to get into some of the additions, especially with my weight. Sorry. This is the design that Mr. Costigan is looking to propose. It is a four-story structure, the first floor, those are your garages for the residents, and then the top three floors are the actual condos. It's a mix of one and two-bedroom units. If I remember the designs correctly, the, each floor has at least two one-bedroom units with the remainder being two-bedroom units.
What's the square footage on it, do you know right offhand, any idea?
Um.
One bedroom with a den, they're roughly about 850 and then they take ourselves about that for nine or 10 square meters.
And the designs, just since we have two different footprints, the designs for the units does vary based on which building you're in. That's our presentation in a nutshell.
Well, thank you. We did have a meeting prior to this gathering and we were discussing a number of issues, and I just wanted to point out to you gentlemen that as the planning commission, we're an advisory unit to the Board of Supervisors, to the township supervisors, and it's our responsibility to take a look at, you know, from the resident's standpoint, we have professionals that take a look at a lot of the technical end of the, during, you know, the site plan development and that type of thing, but much of our interest is in how is this going to impact the residents, how's it going to impact the rest of the township? So that's kind of where our comments are going to, going to head to. And just to kick it off, we're going to have a chance for each of us to ask questions. Amanda, as I say, it appeared that there were a number of technical issues that are still outstanding, and from your perspective, is there anything in there that are showstoppers, anything that, or is it just part of the development process to get these individual issues worked out?
Sure, certainly part of the development process. As Mr. Dumeack stated, this has been a process and is a challenging site. So, you know, they've gone through multiple iterations of plan revisions, of meetings with township staff and consultants to work through some of those concerns. Just to also point out, there is an existing sewer main that runs through the site currently. It is intention to leave that sewer main where it is, I know they've been working with the authority to, you know, flesh out the requirements as to what can be built over that easement and to establish an easement for that sewer line, so.
Is that a storm or a sanitary?
It's sanitary sewer, so that is located largely through the drive aisle of the site, where the parking drive aisle would be.
Sorry, I brought up the existing plan and the sanitary line comes down and then across, and then it jogs into the open space, and that is a 30-inch sanitary main.
Right, so that, a lot of the design revisions over the years have been, you know, triggered by some of those discussions with the authority as well. The site design you see tonight is again sort of dictated by that easement itself, where, you know, no housing units could be located obviously within that easement area. Stormwater management has been, you know, outside of that easement area as well, so a lot of the design again is facilitated sort of because of that sanitary sewer easement. Other than that, yes, there are multiple comments that we still have in our review letter, because of the nature of the site, the challenge with the site, there are still, you know, issues that do need to be worked out. We've had several conversations though, I think there is a path forward but will require plan revisions nonetheless.
Okay, well, that, and that's important because if for any reason there was a, an issue with floodplains, an issue with, as you say, the sewer line going through that, you know, currently appear to be insurmountable, then that's a much different consideration than saying, hey, we do have a plan to work around some of these things. We're going to each have the opportunity to comment on things and we're likely going to end up with a set of bullet point issues that we feel the supervisors would need to be looking at during their review, their subsequent review of the whole project, so. Do we, does anybody want to start with their comments?
I'll start. First of all, I love this site, it is absolutely beautiful, and I'm thinking that those condos are going to be incredibly sought after because to look out again on that, on that big cliff behind, I said, I think it's absolutely beautiful, and I keep wondering, are you going to put balconies on the back so people can sit, they've got a private quiet area back there? So I said that could, but what I was concerned about is one of the things you mentioned was is that you want to remove 100, up to 100% of the trees, and I said, I can see taking out all the trees on the side where the building is, but on the other side of the creek which goes up a steep hill?
For clarification purposes, everything that's on the other side of the creek is protected.
Okay.
The only disturbance that's going to occur there, and it's not from us, we've been, as has been stated previously, we've been working with North Hampton Sewer Authority, and they are requiring as part of the bridge reconstruction, a sanitary easement that runs on the southern side of the creek.
Okay.
And that was granted to them through the RDA.
Is that what all those stakes are, on the other side? The sewer authority? Okay.
Yes. Aside from that, there is no intent to disturb the other side of the creek. We want it to remain as bucolic as possible.
Okay, okay. Well, it's, you know, I have no problem with it being 55 feet high, because you're going down such a steep hill, I think most of these will be obscured. Have you done any analysis on how much of the buildings will show from the street?
Yes, the buildings themselves are approximately just shy of 50 feet. There's enough slope that realistically from the street, you're only going to see it as if it were a two-story building.
Yeah, and even then they're attractive, so that's fine. But my other issue is because the steep slope, I'm just concerned about retaining walls. I keep looking at that behind Munn's, that's very steep, and then you're going to dig a dry well?
The Munn's retaining wall is actually theirs, it's not ours.
Oh, is there a retaining wall there?
Yes.
They have a fence at the top of the hill, I did not realize there was a retaining wall there.
Not only is it a retaining wall, but it's a wood retaining wall, it looks like it's old railroad ties and telephone poles.
Oh, okay.
That is something that quite honestly, before we do our work, Munn's should take care of that as part of their property.
Okay, all right, that was my big concern.
Yeah, because aren't you pushing right up against that, so something's going to have to happen there, right? I mean, what's there now will not hold back?
Um, I don't, I did not evaluate the structural integrity of that wall.
Okay.
The property, it is on Munn's side, it's not on our side. We would not undermine it to cause a failure, but it's something Munn's will need to address prior to our.
Does he understand that, do you think? I mean, does he, does he, is there any conversation?
He's in the construction business.
I understand, but is he?
Would you be willing to have a conversation with him as part of this land development to approach that subject to see if whether you would replace it or he would replace it or?
Absolutely.
It would likely need to be reconstructed potentially in some manner.
Yeah, it's a good point, Janet, because as I say, they're going to be pushing that parking right up next to that.
Right, right up to the edge, right up to the edge, okay. And so the only final thing was, I guess, oh, I wanted to mention that I'm really happy you are making this 55 and over. I said this site is not conducive to kids, and so making it 55 and over really solves the problem of the attractive nuisance and those kinds of problems you would have, but it also means that you have very limited walkways, pedestrian walkways, and I just went, well, depending on their age, they may not want to walk up that hill to cross the street, but it'll be difficult for anyone to get to the shopping center across the street, and so I wondered if you had comments on that?
Unfortunately, yes, the crossing of Buck Road realistically is a PennDOT issue. We have talked informally with both the township and Bowman, your traffic engineer, McMahon, with regards to this. The general opinion we have in-house is that our limited frontage adjacent to what will be that new bridge, there's very little possibility of getting a crosswalk there.
Right.
And it's unfortunate, according to the traffic engineer, they're actually talking about putting a barrier up and running it along the frontage so that you don't have the ability of putting a crosswalk in on this section, and that's part of the PennDOT design for the bridge we have.
Okay.
So realistically, we.
But I thought the pedestrian walk was on the other side.
It is.
It's on the other side, so they will not be able to get to it.
Correct. The only area that we potentially could put a crosswalk in would be right there.
Yeah.
Or could you go further up, you know, and I know you're on other people's property, but are you willing to have a discussion with your neighbors?
Sure.
You're bringing the people in, I mean, they're not bringing it in, unfortunately, it's not your property, but there's got to be a way to get these people around without walking out on a Buck Road. And if that's further up towards the light where you would go across then into the, you know, I think what we're looking for is a willingness to, to address it.
I have no problem on having a conversation, recognize the next property up is actually county open space.
It is, yes.
Well, and I'm thinking right along Buck Road, you know, between Buck Road and the couple of neighbors there that, you know, whether they would.
To have a conversation.
Right, okay, okay, that's it from me.
And just to clarify, something Ms. Kifalo said, so the waiver request for the tree disturbance, you had requested 100% tree disturbance, and that would be again just on the north side of the creek on the, essentially the disturbed portion of the property, right?
Correct.
Right.
We're not touching the south side.
Yeah, if you clarify that, that would help a lot.
And we did have it noted in our review letter as such that we were assuming that was the case, but nevertheless, I don't think that it's currently mentioned that way in the waiver.
I think two of the issues that we discussed that could be problematic were, first of all, the parking situation of one spot per unit in such a tightly constrained area could conceivably be a problem, certainly with guests and other, other issues. I know that the, the original building would have parking around it and the office not being used, that could be used, but have you addressed the additional parking problems that, you know, that could occur in this situation?
It's interesting because we have done some research on 55 and older parking, both with the ITE, which is the traffic standard, as well as the APA, American Planning Association. Now, given the fact that I'm one year away myself from being considered 55 and older, their category is called elderly housing, so it's elderly housing, multifamily. The APA has the most, the loosest parking requirement for either of these two standards, and it's 1.5 parking spaces per unit. The ITE, which actually has a computer model for this, literally is approximately 0.67 cars per dwelling unit. So from our perspective, the reality is, and the assumption, you're not going to, someone who wants to buy one of these units doesn't have four spots.
So it's kind of self-regulating is what you're saying?
It's partially self-regulating, but there will be an HOA, and as I've been reminded recently, the HOA tends to self-monitor. So the garages, based on what the HOA rules will be, can't be used for storage. Each, each unit will have storage built into that first floor which is actually uninhabitable. So you have a storage unit per condo and you have a garage space per condo, and typically the HOA will manage and enforce, hey, look, you have to use your garage space as your parking space.
Right. The other issue was the problem of not being able to make a left turn out of the development, and we're. And we're, we're concerned with people that have to go left, where they're going to end up, what the traffic situation is going to be with, you know, people making U-turns or whatever they have to do to get down that direction.
Honestly, it's up to PennDOT. And I will be honest, just trying to make a right, a right-hand turn coming out of that site.
Is enough of a problem.
You take your life in your hands.
Right, right.
I've been onto that property multiple times over the last three years. It is risky, taking, taking that right motion off, off the property and Buck Road. Realistically, I suspect the right answer is people aren't going to want to take that left because it is that risky. It may improve, lines of sight will improve when the demo occurs and the, the bridge is rehabbed, but until then, I don't know what the right answer is going to be for that, and it's something that we have to have serious conversations with PennDOT.
Okay.
Just to follow up on a couple of items, with regard to the parking, the statistics that you were providing, are those geographic related? In other words, you were quoting a 1.5 and a .67. Is that for someplace in Nebraska or is that for?
National.
National. And what I'm concerned about is, you know, you go to the same type of situation at the shore where you have the parking on the first floor, but there's three other cars sitting in the driveway, you know? And this site just won't accommodate that. I mean, you know, you, and I'm just concerned that, you know, does the average senior citizen have more than one car? And likelihood, they do. And I'm just, I'm not sure, you know, if, you don't want to walk into something where down the road, all of a sudden it becomes a parking issue because you've got nowhere to go. I mean, there's no, no ability to, to expand in any direction. So, you know, I think that, that is a concern on, by all of us as to how that's going to be handled. Did you have any other items?
No, I think that was it. You know, the, the impact to the community of people wanting to go the other direction could be substantial because you just don't know, you know, you can go up, you can go further up the road and make a U-turn in somebody's development, I guess, is, you know, the answer.
I can tell you, I live, my home's on 413 in Wrightstown. And the CVS that's at 413 and Central Street Pike has the same or similar pork chop design as does the Cold Springs beer distributor right next door. Both driveways on 413, I've seen people take the left.
Yeah.
And you take your life in your hands when you do it.
Well, and we want to prevent that.
Yeah, we want to try to mitigate it somehow.
We don't want to walk into that saying, we know there's going to be a problem and, and do this.
In all sincerity, we'll have the conversations with PennDOT and see what we can do. A prior iteration of this design actually had a through drive going through the open space and connecting literally all the way out here.
Really?
And unfortunately, that permutation didn't make the cut, so to speak.
Have you submitted anything to PennDOT at this point?
Uh, no, nothing formal.
And so, again, you know, any, any approval of the actual plan would be subject to approval by PennDOT and in conjunction with the Buck Road Bridge Expansion Project as well, which I know this driveway has been closely looked at through that design process as well. This, the original application and the original discussions with this property, I think, did occur before the Buck Road widening project really got underway into final design. So they, they were aware of that during the design process. But again, any, any sort of approval of this plan would be subject to PennDOT approval and would have to, you know, dovetail into the, the bridge widening project as well.
Have you had any traffic people look at that issue in any way? Have you, and traffic engineer, has there been anybody on your?
We have done informal conversations, yes. Bless you. In all honesty, we wanted to make some headway with the municipality before going to PennDOT. Because taking the effort to talk to PennDOT and going through that motions would be moot if we got projected here.
Yep. The, there's never been any discussion about a light at that location?
No.
No? Okay. And back to the, the topography issue that was discussed a minute ago, not only at behind the Munn's location, but also the facility next door there where you've got some parking going, I'm guessing within five feet or eight feet of that building, you've got, you're parking where, just to the left of the dumpster location, yeah, right there?
Yep.
I don't know how you're going to get that in there with the, with the grade change there.
That, that is actually not intended to connect to us. That was, that property owner, our concession to that property owner in order to get the rights to do this.
But isn't the backside of your parking area going to, going to be within feet of his building?
The intent is that this whole area will be surrounded by a retaining wall, so it can be elevated.
Okay. I mean, that's a pretty major retaining, okay, so that whole.
Ten plus feet.
That whole area has to be addressed between the existing buildings and the new parking area.
That is correct.
Let's go down the line.
Now, with the turning, that vacant, oh, sorry.
The vacant gas station could be a good place to make a U-turn. You could work, right, because I would go into Wawa. That's where I would make my U-turn.
It'd be a vacant.
Put a toll station there, you know?
Or grab a coffee at the Wawa.
Yeah.
And because there is a traffic light right there, grab a coffee at the Wawa and turn around.
I'm really glad you're doing this. It's about time something happened over there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we'll get, yep. And again, when we're talking about topography issues, that, that whole emergency exit, that has not been looked at by the Northampton Fire Group yet. Have they, have they looked at that?
It is, it's been sent to them. I don't think we've seen any review letters from them. The original design that we had prior, one of the prior iterations had basically what I'll call a hammerhead in here with the intent that a fire access could come through, come in, and if they had to turn around, they could do a K-turn right here and then come back out.
Yeah.
And it's still designed for a K-turn. The slope itself is approximately 20%.
Yeah.
It's the best that we can get without basically demolishing the building.
Yeah. No, you're absolutely right. I mean, you, that, you've got a very difficult elevation issue there, and how they're going to respond to it, of course, you'll, you'll find down the road. But again, that's a concern that we have is getting emergency vehicles in and out and.
Normally, emergency vehicles require a maximum of 10% slope, 1 in 10.
Yeah, yeah.
In this instance, we're double that.
Yeah. You recognize it, so, yep. Yeah, and again, just back out to the road, you know, the sightlines out there are difficult. I know you're taking the, the front porch off, which will help that a little bit, but again, I stood out there and watched the traffic go by, and they were moving pretty good by the time they left the, the light on the other side of the bridge by the, to the time they got up there. They're cruising along pretty good, trying to make the next light. So that's, that's going to have to be something that's looked at very closely.
I had one comment, Steve.
Yep.
I'm a 42-year resident of Holland, and the neighbors are thrilled that somebody is jumping in to develop this parcel.
Yep.
The Bucks County Planning Commission comments had numerous references to the adherence to the Holland Village Master Plan. And we've been through a lot with the Holland Village Master Plan with the potential looking at the Wawa going in there and other things. And the Holland Village Master Plan speaks greatly about a walkable downtown Holland.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to figure out why their reference to adherence to that in their comments to you guys, what it means and what you could accomplish to adhere to the principles of the master plan. I'm really lost at it because we've heard this over and over and over. There were so many meetings in the township about the Wawa, and it hasn't gone, it hasn't gone completely away, I think. It's just before a zoning board now and a lot of other stuff going on with it. But that was the intent of the Holland Village Master Plan. The main intent was a walkable downtown Holland.
I'll be honest, to walk from, and I apologize, from this portion up to Buck Road.
Yeah.
On this path, take your mountain gear off. Sorry.
They, they put it in there, not me. And it's in there a lot.
The slope is dramatic. It's all rock outcroppings. As someone 55 and older or getting there, I don't see how I would ever want to do that.
No.
Yeah.
So there's been no, they haven't addressed this to you, the Bucks County Planning Commission in any way, shape, or form about?
I will, as, as promised, I will look into trying to figure out a cross-connection to the sidewalk that'll be on the other side of Buck Road. I'll do what I can.
Yeah, you'll see it in their, in their, in their write-up. Like I said, it's mentioned a number of times, but they don't refer exactly to what they mean when they put it in there. So I guess it's up to you guys to figure that one out.
I'll do what I can.
And Patrick, yeah, I think that's a very good point, and I don't think there's any expectation that you're going to come in and start, you know, building sidewalks on either side of the road or overpasses over, over Buck Road or that type of thing, but to at least have a conversation with the, with the township folks as to, you know, how can we get further down the road towards that objective? You know, the, it's, we're about 2% down the road now. We'd like to push that a little bit further down the road. And the time you do it is when, when somebody's in doing what you're doing. I mean, plain and simple. It's, it's, now is the time to address it, and maybe it's a joint effort by the, by the township and the developer in some way to improve this accessibility around the village. So it's, it's something that needs to be recognized.
For my neighbors in Holland, I thank you very much from all of them.
We will do what we can.
Yeah.
Does anybody else on the board have a question, issue? We have, I think, a gentleman here that, are you one of the neighbors? No? Just an interested resident?
Reporter.
Reporter? Oh, wow. Did you get my good side? Any, anything that you want to, to bring to the party? No? Does anybody have anything else that they want to bring up that we discussed prior to or during the looking? Anything else that you folks?
No, thank you.
Okay. Now, how, how we, you know, we're, we would like to push this on to the supervisors. They're ultimately the deciding party in this whole thing, so we recognize that. But we want to be sure that we're pointing out the issues that we feel need more attention, so we're reinforcing probably a lot of very obvious issues that we've talked about here tonight. So are we in a position to make a, make a recommendation?
They're in conjunction together.
Do you want to, do you want to do that, Mike, before we?
You can move ahead.
Okay, let's, let's. That being said, as I say, the, we do have a, a recommendation for improvement, but it will be with conditions. And as I say, I don't think we're going to be suggesting anything that is not pretty obvious to anybody that's looking at the project or aware of the circumstances. Do we have somebody that wants to?
I'll do it.
Okay, Janet?
I move that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors preliminary final approval of the Mill Race Inn redevelopment, SLD 23-2, subject to compliance with the Township Engineer's Review Letter dated February 15, 2024, and the Township Traffic Engineer's Review Letter dated February 15, 2024. It's also recommended that the requested waivers be granted and that consideration be given to.
Do you want me to give those? I have them.
You've got them listed? Okay, great.
I have them listed. Yeah, and what, what's going to happen is we're going to bullet point some issues for Mike, and there may be some elaboration on that before it goes on to the supervisors. But the specific issues are the, the parking, the parking issue with limited spaces, access in and out of the site, traffic on Buck Road with the new bridge being built, and what we do about the next issue, which is pedestrian continuity, their ability to get around the space, to get around the area. These are all the concerns that we have that need to be addressed. The topography, which again, we've talked about tonight, both for the emergency exit and the adjacent neighbors, you know, who's going to take care of that? And finally, the, the fact that it is sitting in a floodplain and there is floodplain, potential for floodplain interference. So those are going to be the conditions of the approval. And again, speaking for our group up here, we're very happy that you folks came before us. We hope that this thing can, the project can get molded into something that works for that area, works for the new residents, and works for the existing folks in the community because, you know, there's an opportunity to really enhance the whole Holland community there.
So do we have a second?
Do we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I say.
All approve?
Aye.
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 Disapprove? Nobody? Passed.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Now, do they need to be here for the? No? Okay.
I don't need to testify and run.
Good luck.
But I have a lot of township to deal with.
It's a challenging place.
It's a challenging site.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Okay. Mike, you want to take us through the?
I didn't vote that on that. I just was not for.
You were not, you were abstaining?
Yeah, abstaining from it.
Okay.
That was a note for granting all waiver requests. There's too much that has to be done. He's doing all that.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's one abstention.
One abstention.
The next item is a zoning ordinance amendment entitled "The Blighted Waterfront Redevelopment Area," which is to amend the zoning ordinance to advance the purpose and objectives of the Village overlay district as follows. To redevelop blighted properties to promote economic development, provide varied residential housing options, increase property values, and improve the visual aesthetics of the district; to promote key environmental features such as Mill Creek for future generations; and to protect locally historic structures through integrated and compatible redevelopment. In addition, the proposed amendment amends the ordinance as it relates to permitted uses, setbacks, parking, and building height. As required by the MPC, this ordinance is being forwarded to you for your review. If you are inclined to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, you may wish to utilize the draft motion, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
As we've discussed, this is pertaining just to this project. Is that accurate?
That whole area?
It's, it's that area, correct.
And, Mike, it is, it's, it's to address some of those specific issues that you had with setbacks and clearances and that.
Correct, given the, the unique characteristics of the site.
Of the site, yeah.
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors an amendment to the Northampton Township Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 27, for the purpose of creating the Bladed Waterfront Redevelopment Area.
A second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good, passes. Okay. Any other business we have tonight that we want to discuss at this point? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? So adjourn.